$1,442 given to Division Ohio. And I think we can all say amen to that. I also know that a donor gave $9,000 just the other day that will be showing in November. And I'm not sure what receipts will come in from the churches in November. So hopefully, we will come much closer to our goal. But I think the Lord has truly blessed us in a tithe increase this year and in the way you have responded to Division Ohio. Because if we had not had this, our $145,000 loss that we're showing now would be that much bigger.
Yes, amen. Your faithfulness saved a lot of ministry this year, and I praise the Lord for that. I want to have time for questions and answers. I'd like to have those that have shared to be up here close by. I wonder if our principal's here? If he could be... Yeah, Dan, if you would join us down here. And we have these two mics, and you probably have different questions, and we'll try to answer those questions as best we can. And I would like, if you would limit your statements to like, our questions to two minutes. The reason I want that is, I'd like us to have as much discussion from as many people as possible. I also would like to get you out of here by nine o'clock. Now, if we take care of the questions before then, I won't hold you here till nine. But I don't want us to go too long this evening. At constituency in January, we will start at 10:00 in the morning, and I imagine it will take us a fair amount of time. You will, at that time, get a much more in-depth version of what you saw tonight, which will help you as well. So far, the Board of Trustees has seen that. Your Executive Committee has seen that. The Blue Ribbon Committee has seen that. And the delegates will have all of that as well. And so, at this time, there are two mics up here, and I would just solicit any questions or any comments. Also, I understand we have a number of people watching by Internet. I'm thankful for that technology. We were only able to have three of these. This is the first. Monday evening, we'll be having one in Cleveland. And Tuesday next week, we'll be in... Which church will we be at? Centreville Church? Okay, in the Dayton area. The reason is, it's December, and we figured the week of Christmas, a few of us might be there and no one else. So I'm very thankful that tonight, we're able to use technology, because there are a lot of people that live a long ways off. I know that there are some churches even meeting this evening together, watching, and some may even send some questions in by Internet. So if there are any questions, please come to one of these mics, and we'll do our best to answer you. Maybe if y'all come up here... As I say in Texas where I pastor, if y'all will come up here, that way we can respond more. Okay, if you will. And Dan, if you would join us, and we'll use this mic here. Yes, sir. Maybe just state your name and...
My name is B. Alkeneck. I'm a member of Worthington. My question is whether we have explored partnering with another school to provide an education for our kids.
Great question, and let me share with you. I know I look too young to have been, but I've been on the North American Division since Lately, at the division level, we even had a special meeting back in the spring. And at that, we covered a couple of important topics, and one was the concern, as you saw, the smaller numbers to work with, Christian education. There has been talk there about moving our colleges under the North American Division umbrella, and to have boarding academies at the union level. Now, when I was just at the union conference meetings a couple of weeks ago, four other presidents gathered, and we talked to administration there. I received an email, which I've passed on to our officers from the president of Pennsylvania. The request is that we, as a union, we understand that the North American Division is trying to do something, but there is not one boarding academy in our union. And it's not just our union. It's all across North America that is not in serious trouble right now. Now, some of them may be a step or two behind us, but they're catching on us quick to where we are at. And the concern is that if we wait for a long discussion to take place, that there would not be any boarding academies left by the time that conversation ends. So we want to start talking as a union. What can we do to save that pos in our boarding academies? So that's a great question, and I think we're going to have to think differently. I was surprised, honestly, at North American Division this year, to find out that we have pretty much the same percentage of students coming to our schools, but the killer is, we have so few of school age. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Brother Chairman, I'm Raffi's Union from here in Worthington. Could you go back to the slide that showed the percentage of respondents that recommend MVA?
Okay.
The first line across was 67, 27, and 6 for the pastors. Stop the clock, please. It's not...
Yeah. Timeout. Technical timeout.
I don't see anyone behind me. Could I take...
Yeah.
...two minutes? Yeah, perfect.
Yes.
Okay, so the first comment is, the top row adds up to 100%, but the second row doesn't, so I'm not sure if it's supposed to. But even still, if 63% of the staff in any workplace are either lukewarm or have negative feelings about where they work, isn't that a huge concern?
The answer for me would be yes.
And is that being investigated further and something being done about it?
You know, there have been some conversations, and I've had some staff talk to me to try to balance that picture out a bit, that they didn't want to be left with the impression that they would not... Am I speaking... You know, there are some here tonight that might share, but it still is concerning. If those closest to it have this percentage, I think that's what you're pointing at. But I have had some... I had some conversations since these other committees, and this was out, sharing with me that feelings were not doing it, so...
Correct. And these numbers right here, this should be 19% and 18%. I went to the number of respondents. I went to the wrong row. So that's three people, three respondents each there, but it should be 19% and 18% then you have 100.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for... I'll say this. I really appreciate of a Blue Ribbon Committee, they've done a lot of work in a short amount of time. And those of you who will come to the delegate meetings, and I believe we need to livestream that as well that day, and I'm sure we will for those who can't. There has been a great deal of study done in a very short amount of time, and it's been very impressive work. Please come forward.
I really believe in Adventist education. We've had two graduates from Mount Vernon Academy, and I have a seventh grader who I'm concerned about. Obviously, we'd love him to have an Adventist education as well. I'm wondering if the idea of an e-school has come up, and if our elementary schools could be used part-time with perhaps a facilitator at our elementary schools for an e-school from the academy, so that our children can still have an Adventist education.
Amen. I understand that we have one already from Toledo, who is by distance learning through our academy. We have to ask those sorts of questions, because whatever happens ultimately, first priority has to be for us, how do we educate secondary level of our students? Because we care about that. And here's what I said to the committee so far, and I'm saying it to you. I do not want us to waste this crisis. So no matter which, how this conclusion comes for us in the next months here, it must not be the conclusion. We've got to stay at this, and maybe we will have to help our denomination in North America pioneer how we move forward, because we must not give up on secondary education. Yes?
My name is Menel Reed, and I have two children that attend the Mansfield Seventh Adventist School. They are nine and 11. My daughter will soon be 10. And I am concerned, because I need to have a place for my children to go. I refuse to not have them in Christian education. I am relieved that Pastor, you have expressed a great desire or a great concern about secondary education, but I am a little concerned that I have not heard more about the Spirit of Prophecy. What I'd like to hear our leaders telling us, what guidance, not just from a Blue Ribbon Committee, which I think is important, I appreciate all the work you've done, what is the guidance that we have about Christian education from the Spirit of Prophecy? What is the tradition of our church? Why is it so important? I believe you all know the numbers about us losing our kids as they progress through the educational system. I believe you all know the numbers that if they're not baptized by certain ages, we will probably lose them. I have seen a personal friend who had three children, were attending MVA. For various reasons, they could not continue, and they went to another Christian school. Well, naturally, they started dating. Their friends were non-Adventist, and they're still lovely young people. They got married, but all to non-Adventist, and they do not attend our churches anymore. This is serious, gentlemen, and I know that you want to dispassionately look at the figures, but we also need to place emphasis on keeping our young people in this church, and how vital and important this is for young people.
Not only keeping them in, we need to start growing. We need to start growing the North American Division, but I'll stay close to home. We have got to start growing in Ohio. The portrait up here is not just about schools. If the average age in Adventism in Ohio is even older than in North America, that means 62%. Now, the other day, when I was hearing these numbers, I thought to myself, I'm so disappointed that tithe hasn't increased more. And I'm praying, and I hope you'll join me, that more will come in, because we've got to be ministering about the kingdom. But if we're 62 and older, what we have is a lot of our members on set incomes, not only without children, but set incomes. As I'm traveling around, week after week, I'm in different churches almost every week, and sometimes two. And I'm looking out a lot of times, and I'm seeing no one younger than myself, and that's scary, right? So we are aging, but we also have a gospel commission. So we've got to grow. Not only, we need to be keeping our young people, yes, and we need to be bringing more in. We need to be bringing more young families in, because there's this huge gap between about my age down, and we're getting old real fast. Thank you for your comments.
I will not hold the mic for...
I interrupted you. Go ahead. One last thing. Okay.
My name is Tom Tarbin. I don't have a question, I have a comment. Andrew Quayor is a freshman at Mount Vernon Junior Academy. Andrew is having a very good time up there, and he would like to graduate from Mount Vernon Junior Academy. He has three siblings that would like to graduate from Mount Vernon Junior Academy as well. So I hope that we can work to get this going in the right direction.
The question about the Spirit of Prophecy. I'm sure the discussion with Blue Ribbon Committee, those things were probably talked about, but I'll ask those questions for you. Yes?
I'm wondering how the committee can address to the constituency here, how we can bring back financial, like backing, like businesses back to the academy so they can be viable and provide jobs for the students? And also legally, what we can do to address the IRS? Because I hear that there's more and more like state regulations, and it's affecting how and when students can work.
We have... When I went to academy, I worked probably too much. But nowadays, the laws of the land don't allow with child labor, especially for freshmen and sophomores. It has impacted in huge ways. I think for boarding academy to go on, we're going to have to have other streams of income. We probably need wise businesspeople willing to help us to have businesses that help support our campuses, because tuition and subsidy isn't enough. It's just not. When it actually costs us more than the $19,800 per student, I heard a number somewhere around $24,000. You know, I've heard so many numbers in the last while, but we've got to have other incomes coming. And there is a challenge because of work hours and no industries. When I was in school, we usually had some industries around campuses, and we could work. It's hard to find industries willing to do that now, unfortunately.
I just... Tuesday, I talked with Ham Kenosa, who is the Union Director of Education, and asked him about some of these very issues with student labor. And he said, "The General Conference Legal Department is now working with the Labor Department to try to resolve and come up with a way for us to resolve that issue." I know some schools are starting vocational training, which gives them academic credit, but we don't know whether that's going to pass muster yet or not. So that is being investigated, so that hopefully will have a resolution coming.
We need that, because part of what we thought, and we leave in as education, is not just the academics, but learning to be good workers and a good work ethic as well.
I'm glad to hear that, because that does impact. And then the second thing is to increase awareness, maybe to our members, for maybe creating endowments that will help support the buildings and stuff. Because we've always heard about educational endowments, but it was an eye-opening experience to understand how much maintenance each building costs. So could there be a way of raising funds that way?
Certainly. Certainly, there can be endowments for maintenance and upkeep, capital improvement. And what you find is, on most of our academies or even colleges, a lot of our buildings were built around the same time, many years ago. So not only are there fewer students, you have older buildings, and we're caught in that type of...
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a small endowment that has been started for maintenance of the buildings. Those are good comments, and if you think back to the slides, if we divide what we're talking about here into two categories, the short term and the long term, if we can solve the short term, these are all very important topics for discussion in the long term.
Hi there.
I'm Janesta Walker, and I'm the Vice Principal at Mount Vernon Academy. And I want to address that slide that's up there on the screen as well, because it is a slide that is very frustrating to look at, and I thought a lot about this after our meeting the other night. But what I would like to say to the people is, when you look at the number and you see that we had 63% of our faculty who were hesitant to recommend the academy to a friend, that does not mean that our faculty do not love and cherish Mount Vernon Academy. That's a reflection of the fears they have. And if you're afraid that a school is going to close, it would be very difficult to put a nine or a 10 that you're going to refer other people to come. That doesn't mean they don't love and support our school. It means they're scared. They're scared of what's happening. We do not want this school to close. There are many staff members there who love our school passionately, and this is devastating to all of us. We are not in this business because we don't care. None of us are getting rich being Adventist educators in worldly measures, but we are rich because of the blessings we have to get to be Adventist teachers. And we are scared right now. That does not mean we don't love our school.
Thank you for that balancing picture. Yes, sir.
Flippa Chapman, from Eastwood Church. She addressed the staff, but I'm really sorry about what the pastors... 67% of the pastors here in the conference can't recommend our school. I don't know what's going on. Either they're not the right type of pastor, and the clearing out of the... It should be in the pastors also. That goes to what Ellen White has to say. But the last question I have is, how much money is owed to the school from past students? What's that? How much is owed? It wasn't up there.
It's about $462,000.
Half a million is still owed, just short of a half. Is there some way that we can collect that?
Not easily, because the older an account gets, the harder it is to collect it. Some of these accounts had been turned over to a collection agency some years ago, and they couldn't do anything with it. The school has taken them back. The school is sending out monthly statements, and they're doing their best to try to collect them, but that is a hard road ahead. The longer a student is away from the academy, the less likely you are to collect the bill.
It's a serious problem, brother.
Pastor, I will do that. But I have a counsel for you with respect as a pastor. You need to turn off that device. That is not the Holy Spirit leading you.
I've asked him to the two-minute... Yeah, so he's doing that for me. Yes, sir. Ma'am.
I have a few questions.
Hold it. I want to respect both ways here.
I respect...
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I agree, and you'll have your chance. Two minutes. I thought there would be many people coming forward. I've been at North American Division and had two minutes multiple times. Here we go. Ma'am?
One I wanted to ask... Well, I'm Ann Dickerson.
Hi there.
I'm an alumni, second generation. I have an eighth grader. Not in those numbers. I wanted to say thank you to the people up here recording. There are about 70 people online. My husband included at home, many friends also online texting me questions that they want me to ask. One, why did we not include the Dayton area numbers for potential students?
Someone could share that, but my guess, I wasn't on that committee. Yes?
The committee worked in a great hurry, and from the time that we were given this assignment, to the time that we were supposed to synthesize our data, it kind of hit over the Thanksgiving break. And so, I did those numbers on my own. It was... You had to make some assumptions on the run. The numbers, actually, there's two tables, and we didn't present both tables. But my understanding is that Spring Valley Academy draws from nine counties around it, and so it was just basically assumption. And the assumptions are hopefully transparent.
Now, with CJA, I'm newer here, but I also believe we have quite a few non-Adventists at that one, which would impact us probably as well in Cincinnati Junior Academy.
The other question was, and it's like I had said, I have an eighth grader, and this isn't really a question, but it's, why are we not looking at those that are not enrolled in the SDA system that are of elementary-age schools? And I just want to say, I think we need to do more of that. That was all that. The other thing was, when we do the restructuring and looking at affordability, how are we going to restructure with affordable tuition numbers? You're asking why we aren't sending our students? I can't afford $20,000 a year. And, you know, get that to something I can actually manage, and I'd be happy to have my eighth grader who desperately wants to go there next year.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And this is a real question, and this was asked by a friend, Matt Bell, online. How do we raise $3 million, 105 by February, and 100... I mean, 1.5 by March? How do we do that?
Yes.
How are you asking us to do that? How do we help?
Could you ask a question here as this...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The question is, how can we raise 1.5 million by the February date and another 1.5 by the March date? And that is as important a question as it comes. And it seems to me it would have to be an absolute miracle, because it's that much money.
It seems impossible.
It does seem impossible.
For me, that number seems thrown out there just in preparation to close the school.
Those who are on the committee can share why that amount was listed.
The first number, the 1.5 million, is a number based upon the debt. And with the... It's one thing to look at the academy owing the conference half a million dollars, but then there's a... When the conference just had to acquire a line of credit of $700,000, now that was not monies that were in conference reserves, and now we have set up a debt that has to be serviced. The alumni have stepped up to that, and they have offered to pay the interest. It is an interest-only loan for a while. The Alumni Association has stepped up the plate to pay the interest on that line of credit. So that's how we arrived at those... That first number, 1.5 million, and the actual debt will probably be more than that by the time the school year is over. But we feel that it's very important that the school has to be debt-free in order to be viable, and that was the mandate given to us, was to explore the viability. It's hard for any business to operate if it is facing a very, very large debt. To service $1.5 million of debt, that's huge. So that's where that number came from.
The gentleman just asked you what the debt was. Wasn't it 400 and something? You said, "What was that debt?"
No, that's accounts receivable that students owe.
Okay, thank you.
So there's other monies that the conference has loaned to the academy along the way that adds into that number, plus the $700,000. And with the cash flow projections that have been done for the remainder of the school year, even with the $700,000 line of credit, with the assumption that accounts receivable is collected at 100%, which would definitely be an anomaly for recent years, even if 100% is collected, we still are short at the end of the school year. And you saw the slide, there is no capital, there's no reserves at the academy, there's no reserves at the conference. So how can a business move forward? Yes, if they retire the debt, if the debt is out of the way, but there still has to be some cushion there, and the working policy for the NAD, you know, there has to be at least three months, I think, is the number. Three to six months. Six months of working capital to be within policy. It has zero. So that's how those numbers were arrived at. Have to retire the debt, because that's going to have to be serviced. You know, if it was monies loaned by the conference, if all of that was on the conference books, you know, we could probably get by for a while yet. But when the line of credit is elsewhere, that's a huge number that has to be addressed.
So that's the first 1.5 million you're addressing right there.
Right. And remember, of that...
1.5 is for that next year.
Right. And the question I just had is, how are we... Okay, alumni has promised to do the interest on the loan. What else are we doing to collect that amount of money?
Well, the Alumni Association is in the process of contacting alumni to see how much can be raised there. And part of it is the awareness that we're trying to create among constituents, and to see how everyone can band together. If this is the mission that we want, if everyone can band together, can we make this happen? But I just want to remind you again, of that 1.5 million, a lot of that is really current operating. Now, I didn't go back into the... I didn't give you the details of what really happened in the previous school year. And we had some significant issues with... In the last school year, with regards to the business manager and the reports that were coming to the academy finance and the board, which I was on at the time, it looked like we were just tracking barely above, but we were making it. It turned out, by the time we got into the school year, when he put adjustments and the auditors came in, it was just being reported to us accurately. So there was some carryover, some additional debt carried over from last year. And actually, if you understand, if we want an explanation about the international students and how they pay, they pay on the calendar year, so there was a very large portion that was paid in January, of which half should have been for last school year, and the other half should have been for the next year. half should have been put in reserves for, to pay in this school year. It was all spent last school year.
So alumni are doing portions of it. Are we, like, sending flyers out to churches? Are we, that's, I, I wonder, how are we getting that money? What are we doing to let people know?
How to get the word out?
The numbers that you're seeing on the screen were just officially released us. I said, the, the, the numbers that you saw on the screen were just officially released us yesterday. We are in the process of looking at the communication process. On, when Ron says this is a miracle event, I have contacted Lilia Wagner, President of PSI Philanthropic Services of Institutions, and this is a miracle event. If this is to occur, this is an impossibility. If it's in our human work process, it means sixteen hundred donors have to be vetted, and then we have to talk to them. It means that you're going to want six hundred of them to have liquid cash assets. You're talking eight hundred hours of FaceTime in that process. There's not eight hundred hours between now and then. So this is really going to come down to the awareness of the body of Christ, and we are going to be leaning into the generosity that God has planted in God's, but recognizing that it is a miracle event. We're at the school, we're dedicating from Friday night at six o'clock to Saturday night at six o'clock for a twenty-four-hour prayer vigil. Because humanly, working the system of philanthropy that is commonly used, it's not possible.
Elder Halverson, um, with sixty-seven percent of pastors not supporting the academy, what are we going to make sure we do at Chris, at churches locally to make sure that it's out there?
I think that, I, we had a workers' meeting today, and, um, some of them shared their concerns, so it reflects, it balances out the picture of that number, just like you hear with the staff, the viability, but also concerns about how it presently is. So it's not so much not for secondary education, but it's a little bit of what you heard from the vice principal. So these numbers, I'm glad we've had that discussion, that would change the look of that when you take into account. That's what I've experienced in the long conversations today.
Uh, to address the question on the second one million five hundred thousand, uh, basically, the one point five for the first part, part, will get the school through till the end of the school year. Then we have June, July, and August before school, students come with no income to the school. The salaries continue for the teachers and ongoing expenses, so that one point five helps them get through the summer and begin the school year. Once they, the tuition income comes in, they will start an income stream.
Hi there. All set?
And there was one part, Anne, that I heard, that I just want everybody to be aware of. What you're hearing, what you heard from Anne on the costing and cost of tuition, the median income of the families we serve from Ohio is forty-four thousand dollars. And even if they're operating at the maximum best personal finance operation of thirty percent expendable income, if your tuition is more than thirteen thousand something, you're taking one hundred percent of expendable income. The, the cost of education continues to rise. It's one of the few industries where if new technology comes out and it doesn't reduce the price, it continues to raise the price. So the hub and spoke, the distance learning, those components have to be absorbed into our system. That's, that's absolutely certain. Also, in, in this same era of five, six, seven years, I believe in fifty years might be classified as the Second Great Depression. And there've been huge impacts to family finance, um, that, in that universal system in the U.S. And so we're abundantly aware of the issue of costing. We know the impossibilities, and so this, instead of discounts, we need more scholarships. We need more endowments. Because we, out of the finances, we gave almost four hundred and eighty thousand dollars last year in student aid, sixty-five percent of that came from operations. So we're going to have to elevate our game on scholarships and endowments just to help the people. Because you say it's for Adventist kids. If an Adventist kid comes from a home that only makes twenty-two thousand dollars a year, you already know that they're not going to be able to pay.
Hello?
Anne, already, I asked my first question, but, um, I wanted to let you know that we have sent out over two thousand letters, um, from the Alumni Association. Um, the response that we've received back has been less than, less than what we had hoped for, but again, we are at the Christmas season. And the second question that I have is whether or not we could get a copy of the handouts, and if so, would that be possible for us to, um, place on our website for the alumni? Or you have any-
So look at these slides.
Tonight, some of the, yes.
I'll let me try to look into that. The other thing is, I can try to get word out with the conference family, as we're trying now.
That would be great, even if-
Even if we, through faith points and things like that.
Okay.
To, for, because I feel like alumni in our constituency is our main audience.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, um, my name is Mike Fortune, I'm a pastor in Toledo, and, um, on behalf of the pastors, as just a person listening here now for the second time hearing some of this information, I guess I'd just like to remind all of us that the devil doesn't need any help accusing one another. Like, he's the accuser of the brethren. He's the one that's responsible for doing that. He doesn't need any help, blame it administrators-
Could someone change that slide? I'm kind of tired of that one.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's caused enough trouble for the evening, so let's just pull the hook on that one.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
There, beautiful stained glass, let's go.
My concern is more about when we leave here. When we leave here and we, and we, when we go from this place, are we going to criticize teachers, administration, pastors, whoever it is? You know, I think the devil is doing a great job all by himself, he doesn't need any help from us. What he, what we can do is, is encourage one another and support each other and try to figure out whether or not, and this is the question I was kind of wondering, is, even if we had a hundred percent of the twenty-six percent of people with kids that are eligible to go to our schools, can we run an Adventist secondary system on a hundred percent? And if we can't, what else are we really talking about?
And it comes back to the gentleman who shared one of the first comments. We may need to look at ways that we, with sister conferences, we may need to look at that. What we're going to have to do, no matter what, whether we come through with this or not, things are changing so drastically, so quickly. We, we've four hundred and fifty thousand, it's monumental, but it's very challenging, and it's still not enough. The battery, okay. Which means that I still believe we're going to have to find other streams of income to support our schools, because there's not the same work hours. Often, the pay is going from our schools to the students to come back to the school, whereas before it used to come from a factory and it was flowing in. We've got to find a way to work with this differently. So the question, though, is, if we had a hundred percent show-
Yeah, that's still my question, I don't know the answer.
If you had a hundred percent show, including the children like Anne's son, and if our clerk, clerk's books or any, you know, that's what we have to work from, there would be about two hundred available high school-aged children.
Okay, so, yeah.
But in our best heyday, and in our best economies, we've never come close. What you realize is we've had the thirty percent-ish of those that had kids in school, seems most of these years.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
David Roddy Peebles, two questions. Are the regional conferences, their schools, their schoolchildren involved at all in this big discussion? Second question is, and I think it was perhaps touched on a minute ago, but if you could connect the dots again for me. Um, there's not been a lot said about the junior academy students, ninth, tenth, maybe eleventh grade outside of the Mount Vernon. Also, not much said about the full senior academy that's not boarding in the conference. I'm sure their role is playing some impact on the Mount Vernon Academy's situation. And then a comment, I believe it was about three or four years ago, that it surfaced that there were significant tax issues dealing with the academy. And that, in a sense, was not unexpectedly sprung upon us as a constituency, sort of all of a sudden, the boat sinking, and so we paddled harder and donated and all, and we thought we had righted the ship. But some of us left those meetings with the concept that there wasn't enough minding the store, enough oversight. And now we come here three or four years later, and again, we're sort of doused with this dismal report, and I'm getting the same set of thoughts, that who's been really minding the store? And now the dollars required to bail the ship are significantly higher, and I'm wondering if it's going to be challenging to raise the whatever large number you throw out, when, as a constituency, what assurance do we have that the store is being minded?
And this has been talked about, uh, at least as, yes, nineteen eighty-four. Uh, whenever executive committee members said there was a special constituency then over similar types of issues. We've had, how many business managers in the last five or six years? Five or six. Um, I think that's part of the problem. And, uh, there have been, from what I understand with that IRS thing, they opened the drawer and there were stacks of envelopes from the IRS that hadn't even been opened. So I hear, uh, I don't have a, a quick or easy answer. Anyone here have any thoughts on that one? Well, we may have some thoughts on that one.
The answer to the, there are no junior academies, is that right?
There are some schools that carry the term junior academy, but there are no schools that currently have, uh, student populations for those grade levels. Some of the junior academies don't even have seventh or eighth graders at this point. And, and Spring Valley is a full academy.
Frankly, day academies do better than boarding academies for multiple reasons. They're cheaper to run, they usually have a large Adventist base around them, and fewer people seen in the studies that are done willing to send their children to academy. That's one of the things we're running to.
I'm representing the, um, questions that are coming through our, uh, information at Ohio Adventist email. Before I read the questions and one comment, I do want to remind those that are here and viewing online that this is being recorded and will be able to be viewed again online. And in regards to the question about the slides, since it's already in part of the, uh, presentation, I can work with the gentleman who created the slides, and we should be able to, with your permission, be able to make those available on the Ohio Adventist website. That being said, the one comment that has come in is from Nick Allen. "I, as a staff member who filled out the survey, just wanted to say that what Mrs. Walker stated regarding the recommending of this school to other families represents my feelings and several of my colleagues." Then we have from Bob Hoyt in City Church. "I have read that a former student of Loma Linda University just gave one hundred million dollars to the university. Why can't we campaign to solicit funds from one hundred years of past students?"
I think that's what you're hearing from alumni, that's what we got to do.
Exactly.
One of the things we do have going for us is probably one of, if not the largest base of alumni of any academy.
Exactly. And the final question is from Valerie Allen in Mount Vernon. "Do we know what the number of Adventist homeschooling families is that may choose to use a boarding academy had any impact on future enrollment numbers? And has there been discussion as to what it would take to draw them in?"
The, the data in the, that we have for those not attending Adventist schools is limited. Um, the, the database is not specific enough to tell us if the child is homeschooled or if the child is in public school. So that's one of the challenges that we face right now, is to create more accurate database knowledge of who our students are, where they are, and what their interests are.
Seems like they might be folk that would be especially interested with some distant learning. Yes, Doctor?
My kids attend the Mansfield Seventh Adventist School on the so-called Temple Plan. The church, that means the kids that are members of the school do not pay tuition. I'm not sure how applicable that is to Mount Vernon, but it's certainly a thought. We have a congregation that is seriously dedicated to educating their children and have taken upon them the financial responsibility of doing so. Uh, I am concerned about the cost of Adventist education. I think whatever we do should take that into, to cons, into account. My question is, does the conference have an educational director, and if not, who do?
We do. We have Carol Smith, she's with us this evening, I saw her, uh, in the back. Is she still, is she back there? She would stand. There, okay, right back here to our right, we do.
I will abide by your two minutes, sir. Please do not take this as a, as a criticism, but I'm concerned that you were notified just before payroll that there was not enough money. It just makes me concerned that systemically, we may need to have some process in place that are a little bit more proactive.
Yeah. Let, um, let me tell you how that, I, how that happened. So we learned this, and I thought, how could that be? Because, um, we have been without a treasurer for a bit, and our assistants, we, we ran a, a short-staff ship at the conference, but we had an adm, a treasurer at the academy. Obviously, the way the funds were done and where we got in a bind was with our foreign student monies, and not knowing how far back our owing vendors went. And this is, this is always a danger, it goes back to what was said by someone else. You have to have the numbers before a committee so that they can know what they're truly dealing with. And I can't tell you how blindsided I was to get that call when the last committee we had had, we were talking about the coming school year, and it was brought up to ha, add a position, and I literally looked across and asked the gentleman, "We have the money to do this." And he said, "We could do this." So, um, it was a matter of, not only had the monies been spent, I want this transparency here, but with each of those foreign students, there's thirteen thousand given to the company that helps recruit them for us, and those monies had not been set aside to pay that company either. When we got the news, uh, when we took out the line of credit, it was to help give us time and help us stabilize. We were told by our, our present, um, business manager that if we didn't pay the bill, they would be shutting the power off the next day, that food vendors were not wanting to work with us anymore. Now, I could say, we've caught up with our bills. I, I don't like that anyway, because of what it says about our Adventist name, okay? So praise the Lord, we're working with that. Do you have any things you want to share with that?
I think one of the problems, one of the things that led to this was the previous business manager left the school in June to, to seek another job. And the school did not have a business manager until just before schools, the school year started. So we went through those summer months without a business manager at the academy, and unfortunately, there wasn't a treasurer in the conference office at that point in time overseeing things either. So I think that was one of the problems that was led to. But I'm happy to let you know that our accounts payable are completely current today. In fact, I think the checks have just been cut today, and we'll be signing them tomorrow, uh, paying off the entire accounts payable that is due at this point in time. So the academy is completely current in its bills today.
And if we could print money like the government, we could run our schools very well also.
Really fast financially, I do not believe that our problem is a financial problem. I believe our problem is a spiritual problem.
I think it's spiritual, but I also think with these numbers of how many students we have, that is also huge.
I appreciate the numbers we have received. We cannot ignore them. However, I believe that God is able. There were 12 spies, and 10 of them were really realistic about what was happening. They didn't lie. There were giants there. But God rewarded the two that said, "We can overcome this."
And let's leave here, praying and acting accordingly.
Finally, my Father is the minister of the gospel. I have great respect for the ministry. This was just trying to have straight talk. It was not disrespect, my comments. If I have offended anyone, I apologize. May God bless you.
All right. Thank you, Doctor. Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Murphy. I attend Eastwood. My question is concerning the international students. I think that being international is a great thing. I also see that, I believe on one of the slides, that they are also considered to be a liability. So my question, one of the questions I have is, what makes them a liability? Are they costing the school money? And also, would they be considered a double liability? Because I understand that a certain number of the international students aren't Christian at all. So would that impact the spiritual lives of the children that's there to try to be spiritual?
What are the numbers, again, that are from Ohio Conference? Let's kind of get a breakdown. Thirty-six out of the 85. Twenty-six are foreign, 15 Chinese, and 11 from South America. The others are made up of, whether it be a regional conference or some sister conferences, one here or there. So the percentage is very large, especially from one country. It is not a financial liability with them. They are the ones who pay the complete tuition. The challenge is of integrating them. We're new to this as a school, and integrating that many foreign students into the life of a school with a small number of students is challenging. I'd let the principal speak to this.
The international contingents. From South America, we find quick absorption into the student life. Higher percentages from South America are Adventist. But they also have a Western worldview and the common knowledge of the frameworks of theology that we share. From China, we have students that walk into the dean's office, and dean has his Bible open on his desk, and they go, "What's that?" So we have some with zero knowledge. And that does cause some consternation amongst people. But I want to remind you that on the grounds of Mount Vernon Academy is a historical marker for the missionary volunteer movement that says to all the world in this generation. And so we have international students from high economic families that have no knowledge of God or the Seventh-day Adventist Church. And I have a letter from Mrs. Falkenberg, whose husband is the China Union Mission president, thanking us for building the Kingdom of God in China by reaching out to people in a category of the nation that they are unable to reach. So there is a missionology. We didn't go into international students on a cash basis. We went into international students to participate in global missions. That's what our hope is. But the saturation at the point that we're at, being new, there are steps institutionally that we have to improve on, including the development and implementation of a complete Bible curriculum that comes from "What's That?" to a framework of understanding of God so we can then introduce components of theology. All of those things are underway. Our staff have adapted. I mean, our Sabbath school classes, we have a Chinese Sabbath school class now on Saturday. Are we doing it perfectly? No. But we're adapting, and we're seeking ways of connection.
I think part of the challenge is that we are new to it. Also, my guess, and it's just an educated guess, and I may be way off, but my guess would be also, when you have that many from one country, it is easier to talk with people you know with your language. You do not have to learn the others as well because it's common. And I imagine that would be a challenge.
They're common.
Yeah. Which I would if I were in a country and someone spoke English. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is John Bueller. I attend the Blooming Grove Church. And I would just like to say, if it hadn't have been for Mount Vernon Academy, I wouldn't be in church today. Even though I went to, all my previous education before I came to Mount Vernon Academy was through the Adventist system, except for my first six months of my education. But that being said, and what the previous man had to say, about the foreign students at the academy, my wife and I have become friends with one of the Chinese students. And he grew up in an atheist society. And he is very open to learning about Christianity. And we keep him in our prayers, that God will work through his heart to help the other Chinese students. But that being said, the purpose for Mount Vernon Academy is evangelistic. Like I said, I wouldn't be in church today if it hadn't been for the academy. And if distance education had been available when I was that age, I probably wouldn't have participated in it. And as far as the problem with the IRS, if our people who are in positions of financial responsibility are bonded, those problems should be taken care of through the bonding company.
Someone mentioned that earlier, so I have no idea, but I'm learning lots of things right now.
And I don't want to accuse anybody of anything, but when I was growing up, I heard from the pulpit very often about the need for Christian education. When the pastor speaks from the pulpit, it's usually important to him, and the people listen, usually. And if he doesn't talk about it, the people don't...
Thank you.
So I've been back in Ohio for 28 years. How many times have I heard it from the pulpit? If I said five times, I'd be generous. Because I'm afraid of Mount Vernon Academy closing, is all the more reason for me to recommend it.
I like that.
And there's a statement that's been going over and over in my mind for a long time. I need to live up to this statement. And that was something I read a few years back. A person, "One never made a greater mistake than one who did nothing because he could do so little." God can work miracles with little. He did it with many different situations in the Bible. And I would like to suggest that we have a day of prayer and fasting.
We probably need more than one. I don't know when faith points goes out, but I would like us to join Mount Vernon Academy staff and students this week with their prayer vigil. And we will do more. I think we should call for a day of fasting and prayers at conference besides that. But let's start this weekend with our academy faculty and students.
And I would just like to hear it more often from the pulpit. I didn't, I thought Mount Vernon Academy was doing fine. I never heard anything about it, but now I'm surprised.
I didn't think we were fine, but I thought we were a lot better than we were. And here's what I feel about that. I have always been a person who would rather know the truth. Because you can face it. But when you don't know it, it can get too big before the time you find out. And yes, there has to be a lot of responsibility on all our parts. You know, I've been searching for a treasurer now since May. I'm thankful we have someone of experience. What I'm finding in that long search is that we have many that are of age, that are retirement age, and we have many that are very young. I'm glad to hear that in our union, they're starting to do a mentoring program of our treasurers. We need to do that because a lot of it isn't intentional. It's just people in over their heads, or trying to pay bills without money, and it gets out of hand really quick. That's what I'm thinking. But we've got to mentor them as much as any other job, because it's so key to know accurate numbers and face things. Because one of the things we are going to have to learn to do is to work leaner because of what we face, to be more creative, and we're going to have to be very watchful because we don't have a margin for error.
Right. And if Jesus has my heart, He has my wallet, and I need to support the academy for the rest of my life.
I love your spirit, and I loved our time visiting this summer. Yes, sir.
Ron Smith, Blooming Grove Church, head deacon.
Good for you.
And that pulpit will have MVA spoken every week.
Thank you.
I want to take and make a thing for the Ohio Conference to send out letters for every head, whoever has the offering, every church, to make a special MVA fund. That will help. Let God Almighty direct it.
Please take notes for me. I'm getting up into the average age of Adventism, and I'm losing my memory.
Okay. I mean, you know, you've got to have faith. Anytime that I've ever given expert...
He's going to say, "We've got to have faith," and this is what you're speaking to, "but we've got to be faithful."
Right.
And that's what you're talking about.
Right. And I think it'll happen, it'll come around. And I think if every church has that little offering for MVA, you're going to succeed your goal. One, take you back, last year, we had a pie auction, pie, cake, and cookie. Our little church, 35 members maybe, we got up over $1,000 for pies, because I paid $150 for two.
When I come toward, when I get to Blooming Grove for fellowship lunch, have one of those ready.
Yeah. I'm not trying to brag, but it's the idea, it could be done. So have faith, and I want everybody to put extra prayers on your table every day.
Thank you.
And we'll do it.
Thank you. I want us to be the proudest conference in the world.
Yep. Well, let's make it better.
Yes, ma'am. Good to see you.
I noticed on one of the slides that there was several thousand dollars spent for transportation. My question is, what is that for, and is it all necessary?
Transportation.
Transportation would include licensing, registration, fuel for our coach bus and our blue bus, which are the backbone of transportation to connections here if the conference has a youth event, or if we're taking the bus out to a church like this weekend. Ben Bells and choir are headed to Cincinnati. And for vehicle repairs, tires, DOT inspections, all of that kind of stuff.
No, I know that, I have five children who have attended Mount Vernon Academy, and I have some grandchildren who I'm hoping are going to be there someday. I know that when we have sporting events, that it's a big expense to take the kids from one place to another, and I know it costs the kids. I know what my grandson has had to pay to come to Mount Vernon Academy for the tournament this last fall. And, you know, and I think sports are important for kids. I don't ever want to see our kids not have that opportunity. But I would like to say, I'm not raising my children or my grandchildren to join a professional sports team. And I think that we need to rethink the way that we spend our money for sporting equipment and for sporting programs at the academy, that I think we need to have a better focus on what's important, that we should be training our kids for eternity, not to join the NBA. I also know that there is another academy in close proximity to us that doesn't pay somebody to recruit their foreign students. And, you know, why do we have to pay $13,000 to recruit foreign students? Why can't we recruit them the way Highlandview Academy is? Because $13,000 is $13,000. I would just like to say, please keep us informed, because like John said, most people in our conference think the academy's doing okay. And if we don't know what's going on, we don't have any way to help. You know, I'm a good fundraiser. I've raised thousands of dollars for foreign mission trips, and I'm certainly willing to help raise money from Mount Vernon Academy. You get me a list, you get me a desk at the academy or at the conference with the phone numbers and the names, I'll sit there all day and call people. And I don't mind doing it.
Alumni, are you watching this? Are you getting this?
And I would like to say, we all need...
She would like to know your name. Say it to the mic.
Oh, I'm Nancy Bitner.
Nancy?
Bitner.
Bitner, from the Galian Church.
You know, we live very frugally in our household. I cook from scratch, I don't buy prepared foods, and I like to think I'm a pretty decent cook, and that we live, have a pretty decent life. Our bills are all paid at the end of the month. We don't have a lot left over, but the bills are paid because we live very frugally, and I watch where all the money goes. I also know that we need to be very faithful with our ties and offerings, and I think we need to put our money where our mouth is. Here's our first contribution for the academy.
Here we have the star. Praise God. Yes, sir. And if it's all right with you, unless more have come in, it's 9:09, and I'd like for this to be the last for this evening.
I will be quick as well, so it's... I'm Russell Gaskill. I do have a role with the Ohio Conference as a bivocational pastor in the mid-part of our state, north mid-part of our state in Clarksville. I'm also a parent of two that attend Mount Vernon. And, you know, one of the things I'm hearing, I'm also a CPA, so I mean, I'm understanding the numbers that we're seeing here. I'm looking at this from a business standpoint, and I'm hearing what the individuals here are saying in regards to a business standpoint. And as a business, I'm seeing that Mount Vernon Academy, because of through the years, is not only an asset that is in severe trouble, but when you look at what is feeding it, yes, it is something from a future vitality. There is a huge concern. That being said, Mount Vernon Academy is not a business. It is a mission. And a mission in itself is such that says, you know, "By God's grace, we operate." I see these target numbers, 1.5 million in February, another million and a half in March. I understand what we're saying on those numbers. But without, you will not be able to collect those dollars unless we can look at our individuals that we're reaching, and we can say, "Today," not two months from now, not six months from now, but today, if we look at the reporting coming out of the academy, we trust it. That today, if we look at what our staff and what our teachers and our school families and our constituents are saying, that they are... and our constituents are saying, that they are leading our children to Christ, that they are giving them acceleration in academics than we can give. I guess what I'm saying is, is nobody's going to give, or I shouldn't say nobody, but a lot of people will not give unless they know that there is going to be a use for those funds that is viable and not just to service the debt, but to raise our children. And that, the question I have is, and it's, it's not necessarily just for the Blue Ribbon Panel, it's not just necessarily for the conference administration that's here. The question I have is, do we believe today that there is a plan? When we look at the academic side, it's, it's hard not to ignore the financial side, but just for semantics and what I'm saying here, let's, let's ignore the financial side. Do we believe that there is a plan that says, by the time we open fifteen, sixteen, that our money will be used to bring our children into the kingdom?
I think that what you learn with Blue Ribbon, Executive and Board of Trustees, is that the feeling is there has to be a major change in spirituality that's been talked about, in the climate of campus, in academics. And the key will be, how do we go about that in that we do it? Now, with the financial part right now, I feel confident in the numbers. There's two reasons. And the biggest reason is behind me to my right, because I can't do that. I am dependent on people giving me sound information. And I'm try, I want to, at our conference level, hold us to that. I want it at our academy level. We've got to have the accurate picture because it doesn't help us at all to not have it. Frankly, I've said to myself a few times, I wish I had gotten here a few years earlier, not because it's such an easy job and, and easy at all, it's not, but because we need to be doing some changes long before now. And part of our problem is we haven't. We're, in church and in schools, we tend to be when the emergency happens. But here's the deal, in the past, there was some money at the conference, but we've kicked the can down the road so far and we've survived and we've survived and sometimes we were not even surviving and we didn't even know it. And then we get hit with, can't make payroll for the first payroll and then you start, it's been like an archaeology dig. We've got to do it better. We've got to have sound accounting and we've got our, our committees have to have sound numbers and information to make decisions on. And that's part of our problem. Five business managers, and I hear that that's the toughest job in, in our denomination, boarding academy business managers. We've got to find ways of training them. I think the union's starting to try to do that with them and our treasures and we've got to find ways of supporting, but you also have to have someone at the conference level that can look things and spot it. And we didn't have that.
I, I think that quantified, that's a quantified aspect. But when we said we're going to go short term and we're going to say, we need to collect this money, I think we still need to look over that horizon and say, before we can even really pitch this effectively, that this is what our goal is. This is where the end is and most importantly, this is how we get here.
And that's the perfect way to end this. Beautifully spoken. And a lot of the work that is, has been suggested needs to happen. We do not need to wait till the answer comes to start it. We need to start it now because we don't have time.
I do, did have one final submission that came in and I thought it might be a nice way to close. It's from Doug Harsney in Mount Vernon and he's also on the member, a member of the BOT. He said he wanted me to thank you, to tell, tell you, he said, "Thank you for giving people a chance to ask questions. It will do a lot to bring healing."
I'm glad for this. And I was blessed when I first got here with town halls. And I believe these next few ones, as hard as this is, this is good for the body of Christ to be together, to be talking in prayer form.
In response, I think the people should know that the committee to plan the digital dimension for the future has been formed and are working on it.
It even started on Monday night after ten o'clock. Let me pray for you so you don't, we don't end this one. Would you stand with me for prayer? And I want to thank everyone for your comments, your questions. And I want to thank those who've worked hard to prepare for this. And when we leave this place, I'm asking you, please, not lip service, real prayer and real sacrifice. And let's see what happens. Lord Jesus, this is far bigger than any of us, but it's not too big for you. It was mentioned about the ten spies and the two. And I know that's true. I think the thing that concerns us now and then is to know that you are not willing to cross Jordan with just two, not even three. So Lord, stir up faith in our hearts and faithfulness in our lives. I'm going to ask that your will would be done. And I'm going to ask that you would use us to be a part of it. In Jesus' name, amen. God be with you and have a safe trip home. I and a few others will probably stay by here for a few minutes if you had a question and you're afraid of microphones.